Okay, I will call the January 7th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. On tonight's agenda, we'll have time for public comment, three more minutes from December 17th. And then the main topic for tonight is to discuss a possible recommendation to select board about their draft budget, which they are in the midst of preparing now. And then we'll have, share some information back and forth from liaisons, discuss other business, and then plan for January 21st. And we are hoping for an early adjourn at 8:30. Everybody should help keep me on track for that. You don't have to do that, but it will be nice if you do that. Any, does anybody need to make any changes to the agenda? Okay, next is public comment. Welcome, members of the public. Thank you for joining the Jericho Planning Commission. If you want to offer any comments. Jim, I think you're the only Jim and Bill member who's online.
Bill Butler.
Bill Butler, okay. Would either of you care to share anything with the Planning Commission at this point?
Hi, can you hear me? This is Bill.
Yes. Hi, Bill.
Hi, everybody. You are a lot braver than I, but I can see out my window how nice it is. So all I want to do is thank you for doing this. I think it's really crucial. And you know, it's a town-wide effort to make this happen. And this shows it, and I'm really proud of you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. All right, then we'll move on to approve our minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 17th?
To approve.
Eric, thank you. I'm second.
I'm second.
Heidi, thank you. Any corrections or clarifications to the minutes?
I had two really minor, minor. There's one place where it's the word residence, like people, but it should be resident, like a dwelling unit.
Oh.
And then a couple of paragraphs down from that, talking about the, the report that we'll put together. It should be compiled, but it's actually, but it's written, complied.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Wow.
Good grammar, correct ones.
Well, I just. It's probably autocorrect.
Yeah, probably autocorrect. But, um, okay, so with those questions, um, we vote to approve the minutes. All those who favor approving the minutes as correct, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the minutes are approved.
Valerie, can we just have your last name for the minutes, please? Hi, welcome.
Sure, sorry. Um, sodano, S-O-D-A-N-O.
Okay, got that, Nancy? Anyway, okay, it'll be on the recording. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could you just, hi, sorry. Could you just have her repeat that again?
Sure. S isn't Sam, O, D isn't dog, A-N-O, sodano.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're ready to start item number five. Um, the discussion on budget recommendation for a select board consideration. Just to set the table where, how this conversation arose and what we want to accomplish tonight. Um, we, as the Planning Commission, by statute, is able to comment on the budget, especially the capital budget prepared by the select board. And we also have the ability to propose a capital budget to the select board, which we are not doing this year. But hopefully, we'll be in a position to do next year more extensively. That said, we have, as everybody knows, been in a lot of conversations with the select board over the last 18 months about the wastewater feasibility study, which was presented to the select board in October at, at an almost complete stage. And we also worked on the town plan, which identified wastewater, especially in Riverside, as key to development and growth and hopes and dreams of the residents in TS in Jericho. And there was, there, so there's kind of like an alignment of the stars in terms of timing and topic and enthusiasm from, on our, on our part, I would say. So with that, the select board has been working on the draft of their budget over the last couple of months. And they are preparing for a just public discussion of their budget on January 23rd. And they need to finalize and publish their draft for the public to look at in advance of that meeting on January 17th. So they have a select board meeting on January 16th to finalize their draft of the budget. So tonight's discussion is to consider how the Planning Commission wants to weigh in on that draft that they then are going to prepare to share with the public. Um, and based on our priorities and our time and how much we can spend on the budget, Chris Shaheen and I decided to pretty much focus our attention and focus our input on the budget in preparation for tonight on the topic of wastewater. That said, we did get copies of the budget, draft copies that Chris shared, and I'm totally open to other people having other comments and other input on the budget. But that's basically why the conversation tonight is focused on that. Um, do we have any questions about that? Okay. Um, we all were privy to the wastewater report. Like I said, that was shared with the select board in October. And there were key action steps that were recommended in that report. Um, so some of those have financial requirements, but not all of them. Some of them are just actions. So in parallel, the town plan that we all wrote, we also tasked ourselves with the, the task of reviewing that wastewater report and providing comment to the select board about it to help them evaluate it, thinking that, you know, we supposedly are the experts in planning. We're looking at issues differently than they're looking at issues, and that it would be helpful for them to digest the wastewater report, no pun intended, with some input from the Planning Commission about how to interpret the result, how to interpret the report and what, how does that fit in with the town plan and other things that they're thinking about. So in the interest of kind of killing two birds with one stone, um, I asked Chris Shaheen and Chris Brown to work together on trying to hit both of those goals, basically, to provide some commentary on the wastewater report to the select board in an official way. And then also some request or guidance or imploring, basically, on the budget side. So that's what was drafted, and that's what you received at tonight's meeting. And maybe it would be helpful for us to, we have members in the public here, for us to review at least the highlights of what's in there.
Is that available?
Do you have it on the screen, or we don't have it on the screen?
I can try to pull it up. I didn't know when you can receive it, so.
So we sent it as a PDF with a packet. We'll just give you like 30 seconds.
In the packet.
In the Planning Commission packet.
Yeah.
If it's too hard to find, then we'll just work off the hard copy.
Nope, I have.
And are you good with the direction I'm going at the moment?
Yes.
Okay.
I may want to add a couple of things.
So you're saying it's in PC meeting material?
Right, and we're very, I'm very appreciative that Sabina's here.
Has he stuck down in DC in the snow, snowmageddon down there?
Uh, he knew that he wasn't going to be there, there this evening. So I think he just had a different commitment.
How does that look on there? Okay, picking up?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to go through it line by line. But, um, basically, it's formatted as a memo to the select board from the Planning Commission, focusing on their FY '26 budget recommendation. And, um, the first page basically is super quick. I heard Sarah McLeod in my head. Quick, quick, easy, easy, simple, simple, get to the point. And it basically says that the Planning Commission, um, thinks that the select board should continue moving forward with wastewater for Riverside as outlined in the report. And also should move forward with the investigation of municipal water extension for Jericho Center, also as outlined in the report. Um, specifically, the report said that the next phase for the Riverside wastewater would cost $197,000, so that's what I advised here. And, um, the memo also basically quotes the report and about how that engineering expense can be paid for. Although I wanted to, Chris Shaheen and Chris Brown did a little bit more clarification, so I think we can make the funding paragraph a little bit more clear. Um, that basically, our understanding is that it's the, it doesn't need to be paid for out of the pocket of the taxpayer at this moment. And that it can be covered by a combination of primarily loans at 0% interest that don't need to be paid back until after construction. So you're basically getting like free money for years. Um, actions that the town needs to take in order to make that happen include that you, the way it works, which the report really explains this, but we're not sure the select board really internalized this, is that there's a step of where you have to qualify as a priority project with the state a year in advance. So we won't get any money in 2026 if we don't get on the list in 2025. And so, you know, and so on. Um, so we also called that out, and that application is due February 14th. So it's kind of like chop, chop. And then the last part says that we also want, are recommending that the select board charter a wastewater committee. And we are, would welcome the assignment from the select board of helping to form that committee. We're not volunteering to run the project. We're not volunteering to be the chair of the committee. We're just volunteering if they wanted us to, to help establish the committee and also to begin planning a public education campaign. So this memo, this idea of having a formal recommendation to the select board has kind of been in the works for about a month or so. And then Sabina attended the select board meeting recently. And as we know, lots of people, Chuck and Jim included, have been advocating, and the Affordable Housing Committee advocated for the select board to establish a reserve fund, to be funding the reserve fund. And at the most recent select board meeting, when they were working on the draft, they were working on the capital budget draft, they considered the idea of putting the, creating a wastewater reserve fund on the ballot for March. And, um, I personally have a lot of concerns about that route. Um, and partly because I'm not that confident that it would be approved, because I don't know that we, they would have all of the answers that they need to have in order to make the residents' majority of voters confident that they should allocate to a reserve fund for 10 years for a project at its current level of definition.
But just to, just to further clarify that, what they were asking for was a $200,000 per year for 10 years allocation, which would be a huge ask for the community to vote on this March with no background and no public outreach and no nothing. It's a $2 million ask. And also, in almost just as importantly, it doesn't really reflect the way in which these projects are funded. And so, um, using what the, Waitsville is, you know, a year or two ahead of us with their project, and using their model, uh, the project gets, they have spent no money on engineering, and they're, um, and so now they're ready to put bids out for construction. And so they, just this summer, passed a $15 million bond to support their project, which is the first time they've asked the community to weigh in for, for financial stake in the project. And the likelihood is that they will not have to spend any money, or at most, a couple of million dollars on the construction of their project. And so they're required to get the bond in order to qualify for the funding. So my point, I guess, is that it's not appropriate that, in this stage of our project, to ask the town to vote on a sort of arbitrary amount of money that it doesn't reflect the way the project will likely unfold.
That's a valid question. Um, because I listened to that meeting, and the audio wasn't great on the recording. And, but it sounded as if Wendy, that the select board was pretty sold on that idea, putting it on, on the ballot, like that, they were like, okay, we'll just do that. Is that what y'all's interpretation was, or?
Yes.
Until last Friday morning.
Yes, and then we had a follow-up call with Catherine, which was already scheduled, because we were scheduled to talk about the UVM grant. And they have also, they, meaning the staff, has tapped Chris Shaheen to help with wastewater community outreach. And I became very concerned that we weren't sure what scope of what we were going to be outreaching to the public about. We haven't even started this grant. And, um, I was worried that they were thinking that Chris Shaheen was going to run some sort of outreach campaign to convince the community to vote on $2 million over the next 10 years, between now and March whatever, when we have one meeting on January 23rd and then February. And we're working on the bylaw modernization grant. And so a lot of his time is already, so it just seemed not like things were not aligned. So we were having this call about this public outreach, and Sabina had alerted me about what had transpired, exactly what you're describing, Wendy. And I, um, talked to Catherine with Chris on the phone and Chris Shaheen on the phone. And, um, we informed her.
Well, we asked her very directly, do you think this would pass? And she said, no. So, and we said, okay, well, what we would like to do is work towards yes, really. So, um, it was just fundamentally the wrong approach. And so she, but she heard that. And so she, and she said that they would not do that. They would, that she said that was something we talked about. It's not official, and we, it sounds like it was not a good idea, and we will not do it. So that's the good news.
Right. And we told her that this had, was it, they knew that this was in the works in the middle of, of December, because I had shared our plans with Paula to create a formal recommendation. I told her that it would be, they would receive it on January 8th. And then in the phone call with Catherine, um, we explained where we were coming from, that we were, we were going to go after this 197, and that we thought it should be in the budget, and that it, if, that it would likely be funded. But even if it isn't, if, if there were any chance that it weren't funded, we don't want to wait around for funding. Exactly, that it should be allocated, just like they allocate money for everything else that the town does. This is.
It is, because we don't know yet what funding we'll get. We may get 100% funding, we may not. We may need to be, um, you know, Waitsville has a different median income than Jericho does. And so they may qualify for funding that we don't.
Right.
So we don't know. And so it's, I think, important to have this money allocated.
And, but the most important thing to us was, we need to keep going. We cannot stop. We can't have, uh, we can't have half-baked public outreach either. We have to get to yes, exactly. And, and we need all of '25. It's not like we want to delay, but we don't need an intermediate vote to the voters who hardly know anything about this project other than the people who filled out surveys, because they live in the village centers. Um, we need all of 2025, not we, the town. Needs all of 2025 to build support so that we can be relatively confident that in 2026, the entire thing can be approved properly with, with a committee, with governments, where we understand the financing. The Planning Commission has helped the town develop a proper capital plan. I've also been looking at capital plans from other towns, which are significantly more comprehensive than what Jericho has. And so I, I don't think Jericho has, would, is, would inspire enough confidence from enough people to approve a $20 million bond at this point in time. So that was, that was the conclusion that we came to, and that's what drove this recommendation. So the other parts of this recommendation talk about the work that we need to do for 2025 to get to yes. Um, and I think it was important that we said, look, we'll help, but you need to tell us you want our help to assign us the work. Um, so that's basically what, where we are. Yes, so now let's hear from questions.
Chris, to kind of underscore again, um, why we need to set aside $197,000 in our budget when Waitsville needs to set aside $197,000?
Well, um, and the way we're proposing this money be set aside is not in a, um, it's more, uh, as a part of the town's pool of money that could be spent on different things. Or it's not a, that that's set that you have to spend it on this. It's more that it would be available if we needed it. And it also, I think, is equally important that we send a strong message that we're good at doing this. So, but, um, the way the funding works, there's a, I don't know, 10 or 12-page application process, and there's a lot of variables that the state would use to assign, um, they're basically points. And the, the projects in the communities with the highest point god scores, you know, get priority status. But among the questions, there's a section on the, you know, the median income of the community, and that weighs in on how much funding they give. So the poorer community would be eligible for more funding than a wealthier community. So the point is, we don't know yet what we would, uh, what level of funding we would get. It might very well be all of it, but we don't know. And so, um, I think it's really important to step that money aside and have availability, but also understand that we probably won't be all of it. And we will then go back into the town for whatever the town doesn't extend.
Also, the way the budget is structured, because it has income and expenses, basically, the expense still has to show at the 197, and the offsetting income would be a grant or a loan or a reserve fund or cash in the piggy bank or, you know, wherever you're getting the money from. And I think the select board has a better view of all the different tools at their disposal. Um, also, no pun intended. So we, it's, it's important to show it as an expense, and then you figure out how you're going to fund it.
And also, the funding sources need to know that the town is committed to the project. So they need to see that the leadership in the town is committed.
Do you have, not that you are the knower of all things related to the application, but do you know if having set aside that would be a point in our favor?
Well, I think it would. I think it would be a certain, certainly a signal that yes, the town is committed to doing this.
And this is the application that's due mid-February.
Yes. You know, there's two, actually, two applications. One is the CWS RF, and one is the DWS RF. So there's one that's for clean water and one for drinking water. And so the drinking water one, in my mind, would be, is for Jericho Center project.
Because of the timing, it would probably be like, here's the budget that's being presented to the voters, and then all of, that the voters approve the budget. And the voters don't approve the budget line item by line item. However, on January 23rd, the way, my understanding that meeting is being organized, there will be on-the-floor debate from residents. And so the other thing we said to Catherine is that if, if they want, you know, help or talking points on, if people raised questions, what's this 197 for? Which also I had, we had in the back of our mind as we were writing this. So that they internalize exactly, because I think they were not, um, really in a position to look at that wastewater report, which was almost 300 pages. It didn't jump out to, out to them, I don't think, anyway. Maybe it did, but it didn't seem like they knew exactly what the next step was and how much it was going to cost. And hopefully, this is helpful to them, because they don't have time to do it all.
And was Catherine open to the PC being there on the 23rd to be able to explain to folks?
I didn't offer that we would help answer questions, but I think she would love that.
Yeah.
I think that maybe is something, I definitely offered that we would, we could provide information and talking points, and they appreciated that. Um, I'm sure they would love it if we were there. I know I can't be there. I don't know who else is planning to be there. And I do think that we would want to be really clear with the select board ahead of time on when and what questions they want us to answer. Because, you know, we're also, we're also just kind of in our advisory capacity. But I, I'm, I think I'm, I would be very, um, I think it would be the right thing for the Planning Commission to be visible and on the record that we absolutely want the select board to do this, which is why I thought we needed to, like, put it in, write it, and present it to them.
And so this document is going to them tomorrow. So what type of feedback are you looking for tonight?
Um, well, it'll go to them tomorrow based on any edits that we want to make tonight. And if you all approve the idea of this going to them tomorrow, or do you have a different idea?
I wonder for process purposes, if we could just do a, let's, 5 to 5, like, are we ready to say, like, conceptually, great? Or is this, we need more time to talk about it conceptually and then dig into edits? Like, so are people familiar with this, 5 to 5?
No.
Oh, it's a real. Oh, it's a real easy way to get a sense of where a group is, so this means like, uh uh, I totally uncomfortable with this. Five means I'm all in, so it's like current scale. And then you can do anything along the way, and it's just a really easy way to get. Little poll of a group. To know like, what are, do we need to keep talking about it conceptually? Or are we ready to move into the dot, right?
So we're not talking about organization of the document and like that, just like you should read on here.
Right, so so the question would be, you know, are people feeling like we we think in general this is a good. Concept, we want to move forward, we might have some suggestions on edits. So we think it's good is a five, we want to spend more time talking about it conceptually is a yes.
Sounds like a drinking game.
Okay, can I offer that as a tool?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so do your rating. Okay, one, two, three. All right, I think conceptually, we're all supporting the idea that we should go ahead and do this, and there might be. Some edits or suggestions to strengthen it. Right?
One thing that I would really recommend we do is. I know everybody hates these, but the summary should be five bullet points. We need one hundred eighty seven, one hundred ninety seven thousand dollars, we want to move forward with it, this has to be done. Here's all the details later on. These guys are busy, they've got one. Six minutes to go review this. This is what we want, this is why it's important, you know, you should do. You want the details, read them later on. They're going to get.
What are you going to say?
I do have a conceptual question now that I committed myself to.
Okay.
I wanted to come back to a four.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, is four an option?
It's totally one hundred percent.
Right, my conceptual question is. Is pairing. Is the ask. That we really want to drive home a hundred ninety seven thousand dollar budget. And or does including the Jericho Center municipal water? And what is really the comments on the wastewater feasibility study? Is are the the two killing two birds with one stone, does that make strategic sense? And I'm okay with it making sense. That's then when we get into some edits.
Yeah.
But the conceptual question, I think from a strategic standpoint, and to your point about attention span and timeline is. Do we want to keep those two things together? I think all of the information makes sense in supporting the argument for the hundred ninety seven thousand. I kept struggling with whether talking about the municipal water was muddying that message.
I agree.
But and and I I'm not arguing when we're the other, I can I can do both. With edits. But I think it's a strategic conceptual decision.
I think that it's. And we've certainly done hearing this feedback for years that. Getting usable water to Jericho Center is really critical, not only for drinking water, but also for firebiting. And that's. Feedback we've been getting for a long time, and it's. It's the the existing system there are. They're on the clock. And when they expire, which will be. Any year now, they will not be able to get an approved system. That does not conflict with drinking water. And so that's a. That's a it's not going to necessarily add new business and new housing to the town. But it's, I think, critically important, and it was one of the. Highlighted. You know, next steps from the report, and so I think. We struggled with this a little bit when we were talking, talking about this letter, but you know, because. The wastewater committee, for example, isn't. Part of, you know, that's not also. That you could see that as diluting from the hundred ninety seven, but it this will not happen without the wastewater committee. It's fundamentally important, and so I think that we could talk about whether we could. You know. Display the information in a more. Bulleted, simple way, but I I don't think it dilutes it, I think it is all information. The select board has said to us, please give us information so that we can answer the town when they ask. And so I think that. I think having all this information in here is appropriate, we could talk about. How it's organized and if there's a way.
Well, I think where I where I, first of all, I didn't see Jericho Center municipal water on this first summary page. And so when it showed up later, I was I was like, where did that even, what are we talking about? And then, which is an easy an easy tweet, and I agree with everything that you've just said, Chris. And I think calling it a budget recommendation. There's a difference in framing the argument between supporting. The recommendation for the hundred ninety seven thousand or. Making a recommendation based on the wastewater feasibility study. Those recommendations are a list of actions. Or what I think we're trying to do is somewhere in the middle where we're saying. We're trying to hold both of those things, base for both of those things, and again, I think that we can. Thread that needle. If we package this this top. Page differently.
Yeah, I I have some. Specific suggestions to do that, but. I'm dying to jump in, but Sabina's being the one who's actually raising the hand.
Yeah.
She should go.
Would it be helpful to the larger conversation? The committee wasn't called the wastewater committee, it had a broader name that encompassed. Water, drinking water projects and wastewater product, like the water utility committee or the water infrastructure committee. So that people wouldn't get tunnel vision on what. Was happening and then they can.
Well, except I think that the water. Projects. I'm not a civil engineer, but the water project, you know, the water runs the high school. It's in a pipe, pipe is a certain size, it's not obvious whatever it is, and then when you need to get from here to there.
So it's not as in that it's it's not doesn't require as much of a.
Reasonably straightforward, I mean, there's logistics for sure, and. The other reason I think it's important to do this now is that. There's this discussion of extending the sidewalk. You know, which would navigate that bridge, which would be construction at that bridge. So it would be great to know both these things at the same time, because they were likely. Going through the same place. So. I think that the the heavy lift is really for the wastewater.
Can I ask just a one clarifying question? On the top of page three, it says the report identifies three priorities. For municipal infrastructure, the report is for wastewater. Okay, easy piece of, I'm gonna I'm gonna offer a suggestion. I think we actually are all still in agreement despite your conceptualizing. Just give me a grief. I actually think you're that it's entirely right, the first page is all about the budget and everything else is the comments. On sort of as background. To how we got to this specific ask, and there's more to come on wastewater. So I think keeping it on the. Summary. Page as the budget. Renaming it so it says instead of expensive, action number one, spend this. Action number two is apply for the state revolving fund, action number three, start a wastewater committee. Those are so two of those are budget recommendations, and the third is. In order to support the future, start this committee. The reason we're suggesting this committee and these funds is based on our recommendation related to the. Wastewater study, which is enclosed here with. As an attachment. Right, so it's sort of like you got your four action items. And your supporting materials of why you want those four things to be your options.
Wait, I thought you had three things, spend, apply.
I'd like.
Spend, apply and create.
Yeah.
Okay.
Spend, apply and create. And then attachment. FYI.
Yeah.
Is the. Our recommendations. Related to the wastewater project as background to this recommendation. And to support the. Committee that we hope will be formed. Right, and so then it gets to what you're saying, Eric, which is just super clear, what is the request? It doesn't muddy the water, but if we're still delivering our recommendations. And saying the way we think we should really go about it, please read.
Criticize.
National behind the recommendation.
And I will add too, that all this information is going to be super helpful down the road. Or when we're forming a public education campaign, so even if it doesn't get included in this document, it has so much value and and thank you. For putting so much time into it.
And so.
And and all kind of research about the funding opportunities, all that is going to be so critical when we flush out that public education campaign.
And actually, thank you, do you mind if I add one more thing? And do you think even what you just said. Under action number one, which is the spend and where you can get potential funding, like we take out that word as this funding. The the underlined funding.
Oh, yeah.
Just combine that in.
Oh, yeah.
Right, it says that. Report and the PC's research always conclude that the engineering expense will like most likely be offset. Mostly or fully by grants, I would put in parentheses right there. The report.
Right.
Of potential funding attached.
Right.
Because it just feels like it's hanging, and that might actually get them to take a look at all this great research that you did.
Yeah, and actually, in the meantime, so. Chris had edited something else that from previously, so we were going to add suggest to add in a sentence that says. Maybe possible that Jericho can fund the next step of planning and preliminary engineering with a zero percent interest. CWS RF loan, which would be rolled into a construction loan, the C report page sixty seven, exactly what you're saying. The report and the PC's research on wastewater include that. The expense and construction loans would let would be partly offset by a combination of grants and user fees. So we we got a better understanding of how how it works from a second term from this draft. So we would add text like that.
Mm hmm, okay. And if it gets really specific, put it as a footnote.
Yes, or put it in the longer part, yeah. Use like budget line item or. Budget for or.
Well, not actually spending it.
Yeah. But it uses language spend.
Yeah.
Yes, allocate was the word, right?
And there's no guarantee, we'll actually have to spend them on it either.
That's my point, yeah, there's a lot of confusion about how much this costs versus how much we're at, we actually have to put the bill for.
Right, yeah.
And the short answer is we don't know.
Right, yes.
We're cautiously optimistic that we will get much of it funded, but we don't know. The one one thing I want to point out is that. When this goes, when the work of the wastewater system goes forward, it we should, and I mean Riverside, in Riverside. We should immediately be in conversation with Underhill. Because it it seems to me that it would be silly to not include Underhill and. The one ninety seven figure is. Their. Opinion and probable cost without including River without including Underhill in that project for the next stage of work, so. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that I I think as it goes forward, it it needs to include Underhill. At least to say, you know, we're doing this, are you in?
And I was really glad you called, I assume it was you, Chris, that you called that out in your. I think creation of the of the committee or in your action.
Yes.
Doing a big representation from Underhill and I was really.
Yeah, it's really solid.
Yeah.
It's really, really solid. Okay. Any other, we're not making any decisions right this minute, but everybody stewed on it a little bit, any any burning comment? Because I'd like to take public comments and then we make a decision, we're all part of, and then we make a decision.
And we're going to see a second version of the draft, but with this.
We don't have to be a time for that, because we don't have another meeting.
Yeah.
Can we send? Any kind of thoughts with the understanding that helpful things can be used in anything that's not helpful? Yeah, I think anything, I think we can say. Well, let's pause on that, have a thought. That I'll I'll keep myself for right now. So we'll wait, now we'll invite public comment. Chuck.
The reason I advanced the idea of money for the reserve fund a year ago and again this year. Was because I felt it might force the select board. Into a leadership position. You know, I've been responsible for many business plans through the years, I never needed somebody to write bullet points or an elevator pitch for me. If I'm running something. I can get up and talk about it, okay, wastewater is the number one priority in the select board's town plan. If they can't get up. And make a pitch for it at town meeting, it's not going to happen. So I think the number one thing on here needs to be, it's time for the select board to lead. We've had wastewater committees before. Catherine has been around for wastewater study. Wastewater committees, the purpose of a feasibility study is to get you to the point where you can make a decision. The select board needs to say, we're doing this, the outreach follows the select board's decision that we're going to do this. Because then you're answering people's questions about it. The idea that somehow we do outreach until there's going to be this outpouring of support that forces the select board to do it, it's just not going to happen. Most people don't want this, this requires salesmanship and selling and insistence. And leadership, the number one on here needs to be. That the select board, it's time for the select board to lead, it's your plan, if you can't lead on this. You need to ask the planning commission to write a new town plan. This has been on Catherine's plate for nineteen years. And she still needs talking points on why they waste water Riverside, that's ridiculous. It's not going to happen unless if the select board can't lead on this basic question. We're going to do it, we have to do it, and we're going to make and we're going to make a commitment, it's not going to happen. You'd be a fool to join a wastewater committee right now before the select board commits to the project. So. I believe in that when you described the committee, and so right now, if you go to the select board and say, hey, guess what? We're going to go ahead now, it's time to go ahead, we're going to write a grant, we're going to form a committee. They're going to say, sign me up, we know how to do that. They didn't want housing committee. They put sign me up, do it, and we'll ignore it. Same thing's going to happen. So my suggestion would be, number one, if there's a wastewater committee, not a bad idea, it needs to be chaired by a member of the select board. Chair and led by the select board, we'll staff it. We're right behind you. We'll provide the research out of excuses in terms of staff work. But not out of excuses with respect to leadership, you need to lead this. You need to lead this committee and the formation of the committee, it's not a committee, it's a task force. It follows a decision by the select board that we're going ahead, they have spent two and a half years and a hundred eighty thousand dollars deciding. Getting all the information, all whatever they needed. To make a decision on whether to go ahead in Riverside, there's nothing else. That so it's like decide, we're doing it in Riverside. And we're forming a task force led by a member of the select board. Who's going to get it done, we might fail. But we're talking about the biggest project that the town Jericho has ever done.
That's right.
Now, the garage, the town garage, we've seen. What they can do in terms of leadership, everybody in the building knows. That the zoning for the town garage needs to get done, there's like nobody, the walls are shaking, it has to get done, we're about to have our fourth. Hearing on it, okay? The. Tetro and the Wisdom House submitted their problems with the zoning in Riverside five years ago, and we haven't changed any of them. But all of a sudden, we need something for the town garage and it happens. So the town has the capacity to lead, we need that kind of leadership. On wastewater, you'd be a fool to join a committee right now. You'd be participating. In one more of Catherine's postponements. Running out of clock. So if this form a committee, it should be chaired by the select board, and it should follow a decision by the select board to go ahead. The select board, if the select board, the number one thing in their town plan, they approved, if they can't get up in a moment's notice. In front of any audience. And say why we need this, it's not going to happen. Wasting our time. And I think that needs to come across on page one, there's a contingency here. And I think that needs to come across on page one. There's a contingency here. A contingency is, we're going to support it. You need to lead it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for letting me.
So you're not.
Excellent.
Of course, yeah.
I feel like I've been next to a nuclear power facility. And um.
Appreciate your.
What I would like to say is a couple of generic comments about what I just got the opportunity to read. Number one, what the town is and always misses is this is seed. Fertilizer and water to accomplish something. That's not in your draft. That if you don't seed it, you don't fertilize it and you don't water it, you don't get to Nirvana, you don't get to the grants. And the principal activity here is governance to create necessary essential. Infrastructure, one of which is wastewater. But if you don't create the structure to accomplish it. Then you'll have more of these hundred and hundred, multiple hundred thousand dollar studies. That are sitting somewhere in a disappearing library in the town office. Just think of how few projects. Have actually ever been implemented. We spent three hundred and eighty grand on two railroad circle. At ten percent interest, we're over a half million dollars invested. It's not even in the budget. It's off the books. Four to five hundred thousand dollars, maybe six is getting spent on the garage. That's off the books. Because it came matter from heaven from the COVID funds. So I suggest that you really want your hundred and ninety seven for seed. Fertilizer and water to actually move Jericho forward. On implementation of the essential services to protect the citizens that are already here. Fire protection and clean water and waste treatment and governance. You need to have that budget to actually accomplish something. And you've got a window of opportunity with the Homes Act and the exemption for Act two fifty. If you don't mobilize the governance to create a municipal wastewater. Governance capability. It doesn't have to be a wastewater plant. It has to be that the town has committed to doing wastewater. I've got a memo from Agency of Natural Resources that says they believe that the town can create a wastewater function. And that would then qualify the projects in Jericho for housing. Being exempt from Act two fifty. That's like a fifteen to twenty five percent discount on the cash out of pocket to do a project. And possibly seventy five percent because you don't have to wait for Act two fifty. Because D R B and two fifty actually conflict with one another. So if you want to get something done over the next two years. You want the hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars seed. Fertilizer and water to accomplish something in the town of Jericho that is not a boondoggle with no owner. And I won't even tell you what that project is. But you've got a real, real opportunity because finally my pillar has said. We're going to hold back Act two fifty and allow something to happen. I could stop any project with Act two fifty governance. And run it for ten years. If you want to get something done, ask for the money. To accomplish the implementation of governance and achievement of infrastructure. You need fire protection in Jericho Center. You need clean water. I wouldn't limit this project for one second just to Riverside. Because you'll be back here saying, oops, we did that wrong. The majority of the work has nothing to do with Riverside. It has to do with creating clean water in Jericho. Fire protection and the treatment of wastewater. And it doesn't matter whether it's in Riverside. Down here or in Jericho Center. The first step is creating the people to do the work. And then getting land control. Because the first thing you do. Without a whole bunch of publicity is you go out to the people that own the resource, like the fire department. Can you imagine? Going to the fire department and asking them to give you an easement for sewage treatment on the rivers' property. How long would that actually take to do? Go to the Chittenden County East School District and say, we would like to put some wastewater. For the center of Jericho, which is the commercial district in Riverside. We'd like to get an easement from you. If you don't start doing those things. You'll get absolutely nowhere, which is the legacy of Jericho.
Okay.
We've, so I I'm thinking you can trim that whole thing down and don't just do it for Riverside. Do it for infrastructure, governance and seed fertilizer and water to actually accomplish something in Jericho. Before the Act two fifty exemption blows up. While you've still got the funding that you have left over from COVID.
All right, I agree. Understand what you're.
I would, I would like to come back to the water, which is what we've heard and I heard again.
Wait, before you go again, Chuck, I want to see if anybody else online, give them an opportunity first.
Hello, hi. Um, I I think this discussion is progressing really well, but um. If we have to go to the public, then, you know, and convince them, we need really. Some professional attention put to marketing, you know, what it, what we want to make in Riverside. Is going to produce something valuable for the town and we. We have to show them what it is and make them feel good about buying into it. And you know, what's in it for me? Eh. But I think we can, we can do this. This is, we're creating a center, we're solving septic problems all around the area. Um. We're creating something that's really unique and it's worth putting some money into it, but we have to figure out. Maybe Eric, you know, something more, of course you do, about a marketing study or something, but we need facts. We need numbers to prove to the public that. You know, this is worth doing and that, you know, yeah, it's going to come out of their pocket. So it's got to be worth it and we don't have those facts yet. We're not. We can't convince each other, you know, outside this room, that it's the right thing to do. So. I think a marketing study and get on it pronto. Um, there's a lot of facts and figures out there already. And I think the state would be happy to help us uh get that together. Um, almost on an emergency level because the town would like to know how we're all going to pay for it. Thank you. I'm really happy you're doing this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else online want to offer a comment? Okay, Chuck, I'll give you one more minute.
Well, I just want to come back. Go back to water. I was taking the select board petition around. Uh, Jericho Center uh this weekend and, you know, I heard, you know, a bit, I heard from. Uh, an elder statesman who was formerly on the planning commission, been around for a long time. Basically, he said, you know, the fireman, fire department told us a long time, if one house goes, they all go. I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're living under and have known for a long time. So it's, it's, it really is kind of a big deal. It's been in the town plan forever for the entire. Uh, the entire tenure of the current select board chair. It's really, it's really is a safety issue and a long time coming. And I don't think that you can recommend increased density in Jericho Center. Uh, at all without um without fire, without fire protection. Um, but also say that, I don't know, Valerie is here from the store. And I know, I know she's very concerned about that. We have some great buildings in Jericho Center that are all at. Um, you know, at at real, at real risk.
Highly vulnerable.
Really vulnerable.
Okay, so.
We also learned from several people and first responders, fire, firemen, the last couple, I learned the last couple of weeks. Is that absent water supply in Jericho Center, there's really nothing that. Uh, 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 mutual aid fire departments can do to help. Because they can't truck, they have to, they can't truck water from Williston. To help us. There's like, they're bringing like more guys with axes really. Um, so we need water in order to have mutual aid.
Okay, so in the interest of um getting this done. Um, now that we've heard some good comments and helpful comments, um. What do people want to do?
I can make a suggestion. I think um. Based on something Chuck said, I would suggest we amend. Um, the statement of recommending that the select board make a claim, blah, blah, blah. And include in it that a member of the select board. Become a leader of the wastewater treatment plan, our treatment program. And it's not. On off on some other group who doesn't really have any authority.
Okay.
They take leadership on this and be the chair of the wastewater committee.
So is anybody, everybody good with that edit? Well, there were sort of two there. One was. Calling it a task force instead of a committee. And the second was explicitly recommending that a select board member be the chair. Well, based on what we read about committees and best practices for wastewater. The select board member was on it for sure, but who was generally the head of the committees that they said were successful? Do we remember?
I don't remember. I know that it included. At least one person from the planning commission and at least one select board member.
Yeah.
Um. And then other people, but I don't recall again who, who led the committee. I think one of the planning commission, one select board would be a good balance.
Yeah, yeah, we're all, we're all hundred percent in favor of this. Can I offer one suggestion?
No, I'm done with public comment for right now. I want to.
Well, I, you know, you want to get something done. The grand list is at risk because you don't have what you need. And the values of the properties that we're talking about are at risk. And if you don't do something significant to protect the grand list and to enhance its value, you're going to adversely affect the income.
We understand that. Um. So how do people think about changing it to a task force and having a select board?
Well.
It's not up to us.
I don't really care too much, but every place I've looked at, it's always called a committee. So I don't, I understand the PTSD about committees, but.
Right.
Um. But it's what every other town has had.
And that's what all the public documents are.
Right.
Organized.
My glass is half full on this, Chuck. I, I, I know yours is half empty, but I'm, you know, I.
Please, I am not.
He referred to me, talk to me, so.
So the town of Jericho has different definitions of an authority between a task force and a committee or a different.
I think those exist.
Yeah, it's, it's.
They have, yeah, they're both.
So my, I, I always thought that a committee had a little bit more weight, a little bit more um advisory capacity.
Then a task force, kind of, I mean, a commission is above a committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The committee created by the select board. With a specific task, like for example, the housing committee was chartered by them.
Yeah, but the task for the town meeting reimagined is a task force that was created with a specific.
Typical. I, I guess I kind of agree. With what Chris is saying, when we, all the materials that have come across our desk from the state, if you do any kind of a look up and you call yourself the wastewater committee, they. They know, here's your library of stuff. So that is, does seem to be kind of the brain, brain that they use. I think we should not belabor the, what, what it's named so much as what the expectations are for what it would do and who's, who's on it.
Right, so we describe who's on it and we describe what it should do.
Yeah.
And what it should accomplish. Um, and we can add that we think the select board.
Yeah, I think the name.
They must be chaired by a select board member.
Yeah, well, it's not up to us to say that it must. We can say we recommend.
Yeah, on, on page four, bullet number four, where it explains the wastewater committee is a little watchy. Potential members include representatives to like recommended members.
Okay.
Instead of the tense, uh, you know, recommended.
Representative leadership.
Recommended leadership and then potential members.
Okay.
I think you do that as a way of. Hitting it a little bit harder, as you're saying.
I think we need to hit it a little more harder than that. Just literally say, a select board member must be on this committee.
Well, I, I think we are recommending that because we don't get to appoint it. Okay, right, yes. And I'm agreeing with you. I'm just still in the middle of the power.
Different plan.
Well, and so if, if we were to go with. Um, allocate, apply, create. Uh, on the first page.
Mm hmm.
Um. Create wastewater committee chaired by.
Right, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, address.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. The other thing we.
We could add another verb, we could add leave.
Right, as a number four or.
Or as a number.
Or as a number one.
As a number one.
Right, so that, that was kind of the, the. I, other comment that we heard, which is. Not in here really, which is an explicit decision by the select board to go forward to the next step. So they really should be voting. I think they are believe or their, their. Actions are driven by the fact that they don't think that that report, the feasibility study is completed. Because there are some outstanding issues, like the state has to approve something and they're waiting for some environmental something or other paragraphs on it. I'm not exactly sure. Um. But the town plan says. That the select board would make a decision. Within ninety days of receiving the report. And I, I don't know that they're paying attention to that. And also that. Receiving the report, I mean, they may say, well, it's not finalized yet, but I think. We probably should add a number one that says lead, that says you've got enough information. In order to justify this in the budget, you really, they should really vote and explicitly say, we're going to go to the next step. We're going to go forward on this. And then we can add that in as a number one before allocate. Um, and then just to address the Act two fifty exemption is mentioned in here. I'm not sure if people noticed that, that where we're, there is a. It does say times of the essence, you know, don't shit or get off the pot, pardon my French on the TV, but um. And that, that it does call out the fact that that Act two, right, that no one intended for that either.
Right.
That does call out the fact that Act two fifty exemptions are here now, that they're temporary, that, you know, we can really capitalize on them. And then in terms of Bill's comment about marketing, it does also say that that's what we would do during twenty twenty five. And that's why we would use the U V M grant and that's what the planning commission would participate by leading that.
Yeah, I really encourage everyone to go to the wastewater website and look at their wastewater page. It's, it's the paradigm for how to.
I wonder if we should reference it.
Imagine it, but it sounds strong enough.
Yeah, maybe you just didn't jump out, but that'd be great.
The way it's presented is just brilliant. I couldn't get just, really, really well done.
Uh, it's under, it's on page four, under item number six at the very end. We learn from other towns emulate waste, wait, waste field and avoid Westford's experience, but maybe that could be a little bit stronger.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we could move it up sooner. And it would pop. Susan, can I just ask one, one question? Um. I love the. The lead, you were saying for your number, the only question I have is, given how literal. Our select board is, one, two, three, four. Is there a chance that they would say, oh, well, we shouldn't make any decision until we've made a vote?
Oh, true.
Right, so maybe just like, because. I'm wondering if maybe the vote is officially adopted. And maybe that's before. Number, what I was calling action number three, which is appointing the, the group, but do that and then appoint the group. Only because I would hate for there, because they have so much on their plate to think, oh, we can't allocate money unless we've actually approved. And accepted this report. And then we find ourselves actually further behind.
They need, they need us.
As we say, we're ninety five percent we can approve because we've seen.
Right, exactly. So I'm just a little bit concerned.
Maybe it's a provisionally approved.
Over and fight us.
Yeah, because it's a provisionally approved at ninety five percent, so we can go.
Well, well, not really, we don't really, what we're coming for isn't so much approval of the report as it is. As we're, we're going to go to the next step, we're going to do this and, and what we're going to do is.
Right.
X, Y, Z.
Yeah, so however you want to do it, I just, I trust that you'll figure out which way to do it. I just. Yeah, so however you want to do it, I just, I trust that you'll figure out which way to do it. I just wanted to share that one concern.
But I think it's a, I mean, I do think it's a good point in that like, the most immediate thing that needs to happen by January seventeenth, hopefully. Or by January twenty-fourth is that that one ninety-seven gets in as a line item. And so anything that, that may mess with that priority and that timeline. We want to be. Careful enough.
But I, yes, yes, I agree. I also think that. Somebody needs to make sure that we get those applications down by February fourteenth.
One hundred percent.
If there were a wastewater committee that they could be instrumental in that process, but somebody needs to make that's a real. Deadline is coming up soon, but.
And Chris, did you look at those applications?
I did.
Yeah, and how come, how come?
I thought I would need help to do things. I mean, Susan suggested in this letter that the boys in King could help us with it. I, I don't, I don't know if that's possible.
I imagine that folks from the department that I would help. They've been, is it PAC?
Environment, A, E, T, C.
They've got, yeah. And also there was our, our PAC. So maybe I shouldn't mention that, maybe should just say professional.
Well, and it might be short of a committee. There's many people who could volunteer.
Except you, you, the first, the very first thing on the application is who you are and how you represent the town. So it can't be just anybody.
Can it come from the planner?
Well, I wouldn't.
I think it would have to come from Paul.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm just saying that there, I, I, I think. If we don't have a committee, we can still get an application. Yeah, I think we'll, we'll pull it off. The half, my glass is more than half full over here.
Okay, so I guess back to what I was thinking earlier is that, so since it seems like we need some. Significant, I would edits in terms of organization and some points to emphasize that we've just discussed. But materially doesn't really change this. Is the, or is the commission comfortable of signing the edits to Chris and I to complete? Tomorrow with Chris Shaheen. We can email it out to everybody and sort of say like, you know, if you have any objections or if you see anything to. Send your comments back to Chris only, not to everybody. And then he would include them or, or not, depending on his professional opinion of what the suggestions were. And that we would try to finish that by the end of the day tomorrow. That seemed like a good plan, so I, I think we should vote on that.
I recommend, I motion.
Okay, so Heidi making a motion.
I am motioning that we. Delegate responsibility for cleaning up the draft. To our colleagues Susan and Chris Brown in conjunction with Chris Shaheen. To finalize this by end of business tomorrow, sort of commitment from them that we will see the draft before it's.
Okay, so Heidi motioned and Eric seconded the, any discussion? We're ready to vote. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. That's great. Thank you too.
And I'd like to, sixty seconds. I, I have a few degrees and fifty years in marketing. Thank you, Bill, for the lead in. You're selling a sinking boat if you limit in the eyes of the public. What this is for to a dedicated area within the town. And you're not clear that this is building something that's going to generate revenue, value and success. Talking about pee and poop and talking about three hundred page reports that cost two hundred grand. That's like selling lead weights to a drowning man. Talk about what you're going to accomplish. We're going to protect and enhance the, the properties that we have. And we're going to do good things to create housing, to create diversity and all of that stuff. That's what your, your ask should be about. And then when somebody stands up and says, what the hell is this, hundred ninety-seven thousand? This is the future of Jericho, how we're going to save what we already got and how we're going to build what we need.
So I think it's really easy to add a couple of those statements right into the initial summary, because I think it's kind of here. Just adding a couple of.
Editing, punch it up.
Yeah, no, I think that's brilliant, because it is, that, that is the intention, but it's not as.
We bury people in bullshit that nobody reads.
And you, so you, you both.
Thank you for that entree, Susan.
You both have been here while the sausage has been made and on the twenty-third, as a member of the public, if you would. Express rep, support for the planning commission's recommendation, you would really appreciate it.
And I'd also like to tell Valerie, just so she knows, that we thought about this many years ago and we put. A fire protection system on my property with the collaboration of the fire department. And we have seven hundred thousand gallons of water and a fire hydrant on my. That hopefully could save the initial fire that might start in the center, but we need more.
I appreciate it. I would just like to be able to take a shower around eleven o'clock in the morning some days, because we can't, we don't have enough water.
Okay, well, we'll.
Thank you, I'm gonna jump off. I just want to say thank you all for allowing me to be on this meeting.
Sure. Okay, so for number six. Liaisons, does anybody have any updates they want to share? Are you raising your hand? Are you raising your hand?
I am, I'm up.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to. Mention the town meeting reimagined task force. Susan, you already covered that a draft budget will be made available on January seventeenth. So folks have a week, which includes a weekend to review that draft. And then hopefully attend either in person or online. The meeting on Thursday evening, the twenty-third. It will be, it will feel very much like the town meeting that you all know and love. Except that it's in the evening. We've invited the same folks who table at our meeting to table if they would like to ahead of this meeting. So planning commission is invited to view with your interest. And in terms of this discussion that we just had, I, I will be present. It's unclear how. Available I will be to engage in discussion on the floor. But I will be there if another planning commission member is available. To attend, that would be great.
I'm probably gonna then come. I have it on my.
And I should also just say, since it's a public forum. There is a spaghetti dinner offered with a ten dollar suggested donation. If you want to get dinner ahead of time or come by, pick up your dinner. And then head home and eat it on your sofa while you participate from home. You'll be able to. You'll be able to participate from home in the same way you would from the floor. So if you've got questions about a line item or want to suggest an amendment to the select board. You'll be able to do that. And you'll also be able to voice your opinion on suggested amendments by raising your hand and voting. Similar to a voice vote on the floor. And there is lots of information.
Well, thank you. Sabina?
I was just gonna say that. Heidi and I will be going to the. The Vermont Community Development Association meeting next week. And the theme is navigating funding in the post pandemic world. And it is in St. Albans and. Has lots of breakout sessions and things, so we'll divide and conquer. As much as possible, then come back to you guys with information.
Great, thank you. It was very timely.
And then you're doing that too, right?
Yes, I'm, yes, next week. Yes. It's again, the LCT grant funding session.
On wastewater funding?
Wastewater, yes, so.
Also timely, yep. Okay, any other liaison updates? All right, so then the next item is other business, and I was gonna ask as well about January twenty-third. For the town, for town meeting, if the planning mission wants to have a table there. So I'm not gonna be in town, I'm away. But is any, does anybody want us to have a table there?
You can still attend and participate.
Yes, I might do that. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to be at a table, I guess is what, or.
For more access to town meeting.
And I think you, you go early, but the tables are at five, or I wasn't totally clear on what the timing was. Yeah, Jessica, the town clerk is organizing all of that, but yeah, you go early. And I would assume five o'clock is when we open doors to start serving dinner. So, so it's. In the past, it's been informal. We've brought like flowers and a copy of the town plan and chatted with people. Sabina's encouraged people to sign up for the newsletter, to look at the planning commission page. So is anybody interested in beerheading that?
It was top the last meeting. With Chris Shaheen about getting a poster. That was the graphic from the town plan with the horror areas and something else. I imagine he has been swept up into like tens of a million other things from that since then. But if we had such a thing, that would be super helpful. I don't.
And we do have a big printer, right, the planner's office where you can print. You don't have to go to. Tables or kinkos or.
I think we needed just some, some coaching on how to get it done. Similar to how the folks who did the town, beautiful, like come to their revised meeting. And if we did that, I would.
So I have a meeting with Chris tomorrow. I can ask him if he could print it for us from the town plan in a large format. And then somebody would have to like paste it onto a foam core board and prop it up somehow at the table.
I could try and do that.
You could try and do that?
I could try and.
Okay, so would you be able to be at the table?
I'm looking, I was just looking at my calendar.
Yeah, I should be able to be there. Okay, so I'm gonna tell Jessica that, yes, the planning commission will have a table and you're the, you'll be the primary person. But other people who will come to the meeting are.
Oh, please, my friends and colleagues and PC members, right? Okay, I think it's important for us to be there, particularly if we're gonna put this on the agenda and I'd love to have the. Whatever letter we send, have a copy of that letter with me. Right, like have that for a handout. I'm gonna need someone to coach me through the absolutely, in an unintelligible one page budget thing that you showed us.
Oh, this thing?
Yeah.
I don't think we have to do that.
Yeah, no, you wouldn't have to do that. Okay, thank you. Yep. Oh, actually, I should have asked though, did anybody have any other comments or? Suggestions that they wanted to make on this budget or? We already got our hands full and we're just gonna have to really work on it together next year, for next year.
She incredibly undetailed budget.
Right, I, I'm sure there's a lot more behind it, but this was all that we received. Okay, and then similarly on the topic of the other business. S J and I just wanted to share that we were, we thought we would have text for you for tonight. To update the density provision in the zoning, which we talked about quite a bit last time. And we have it ready to go, but we hadn't completed the final review with Chris Flynn. And he did have some questions about it, so we got delayed. So hopefully we'll be able to talk about that at our next meeting. But we, we made good progress on it, we, we edited five, six, we edited. The PUD section, which we hadn't yet done the last time we met. It doesn't really make the changes to the process. It does change density, but doesn't change the process. So we'll send that out hopefully for the next one. Okay, and then, which brings me to the next topic, number eight, which is planning for the next meeting, January twenty-first. So January twenty-first, our agenda will hopefully be that density language to approve. And. Potentially warrant a public hearing if the language is set at that point. And also we are hosting CCRCP, the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. And they are coming to talk to us about the project that they are doing related to the act two fifty updates. Which is to update the land use map for the region, which waterfalls down to the land use map for us. And I think Chris gave us some homework to prepare for that. Does anybody have other topics for the twenty-first?
I just, I noticed that in Front Porch Forum sometime. I'm not up to date, but recently, that CCRPC had, had had a notice and they were looking for ideas. For what projects they should be doing. And so it might be just helpful on our twenty-first meeting to be prepared with. Here are some of the things that the planning commission and the town has been thinking of because of the update of the town plan that might fit. So we would have that audience with them.
So, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but. Kind of, but we have like a direct pipeline into CCRPC for, I don't know if you remember. Oh, you probably weren't here. There, this acronym, the UPWP. The U, no, UWPW, I don't know, it's the Unified Work Plan. Which basically is the regional planning commission's work plan. And the planning commission, we get to say, can we have a project on your plan and you do that project with us? And that is different from the public. The public is weighing in also. I know Chris Shaheen is working now on thoughts about what he thinks are UPWP. If I've got the acronym right, what our request should be and. I would assume, I would assume that, yeah, he'll come to that twenty-first meeting with our great request also. Or ideas for us to decide with what we want to ask for.
I have a request. Could we have a planning commission? Yearly calendar or some discussion about what the projects would be for the coming twelve months? So that we could then map out those things, that I'm thinking partly. You know, I want to start our budget work much earlier next year. And partly we have big projects and little projects and we could try to make sure that. Little ones don't get sucked up or get lost because of the big ones. I would find that helpful.
Yes.
We've had this in the past.
Yeah, we've had it in the past. So when Chris came on board, I did ask him about that and he has started to draft it. And I think, you know, he, we got buried, he got buried like right away. But it is still, it is, we actually have talked about it and he does, he is drafting it. I thought we could talk about it at this meeting, but he wasn't gonna be here, although he said he wasn't ready. So potentially on the twenty-first or soon thereafter, because we don't want to get too far before we talk about like here.
Right. Okay.
Something else? Back in September, we had met with the select board as a joint meeting. We talked about setting those up for once a quarter. After with, with the wastewater plan where it is, this might be a good time for us to have one of those. Some point in the next two or three months.
Okay, I'll ask him about that too. All right, any other business?
I have a PSC.
Yes.
And I think it's okay to say it here. Then, as you all probably. Um, I think it's okay to say here, um, that, as you all probably know, um, there is a petition. That is out in the public to put on the, um, ballot, a question of expanding the select board, and the last I heard. And there was not as much public response as might be needed. Uh, by just suggesting people go and find it buried in certain places. So it is not one of our responsibilities as PC members, but I wanted to let you all know that as private citizens, that. There could be some need for door knocking.
Could you deliver to us the address for the record, so anybody who sees this or listens to our.
Of where they are posted.
Where that is posted.
Yes, there are like five different public places, I'm going to find it, it will take me one minute. To do so, because I know one is the country store, one is the bank that's right here.
Ail and Bean.
Ail and Bean.
Country store. Jericho Market.
Where is it at the Jericho Market, at the customer?
That's bold report they have.
And then it is, no, it's at the deadline at the fifteenth.
Right, so it's.
January.
Yes.
Jericho Cafe and Tavern, Jericho Ail and Bean, the community bank. Chittenden Mills Beverage, Jericho Center Country Store, Jericho Center Library. Deborah Ross and Memorial Library, Otto Smith, Jerry Hill Hardware. And Jerry, excuse me, and the Jericho Market. And Sarah McLeod is more than happy to send you the PDF of the, if you want to print out and walk around with a signature.
A couple of notes on that, you can, you can't sign the back, so it's only, it's only the side of paper where the statement is. That the signatures count. So either, if, if you are so successful at door knocking that you need another sheet, print another sheet, the signing on the back doesn't count. Um, and the other thing about that, I just lost.
Oh, I, those, it will also be available at the community dinner tomorrow night.
Did you sign multiple times?
No.
The other thing to note is that it's not, you're not signing, uh, you're not making a decision that you want to expand the select board with that signature. You're making the decision to have that option be added to the ballot for voters to vote on whether or not to do it. So it's not a commitment or an endorsement necessarily of the expansion, but just to get it on the ballot. Right, and then my understanding of the deadline is that if. They, if there's the six hundred and whatever signatures by the deadline, it can be on the ballot in March. If it takes longer, whenever, it, it's not like it expires, it's just that whenever you get to that six hundred and whatever number, then it's, then. Soon thereafter, there has to be a vote, and then the challenge would be getting enough turnout to make it really feel legit.
Thank you for.
Whereas like, right now, you're more likely to have more voters participate. There's the community dinner, and then aren't there also like two or three other community things right in the next week? That I was.
There was one tonight, there was that movie tonight.
Oh, right, yeah. Okay, anything else, ready to adjourn early? Thank you. All those in favor, oh, no, we need to move.
I voted to adjourn.
S J moves to adjourn second.
I'm second.
Wendy, thank you, all those in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.